All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is Tuesday, November 30th. Special Board Meeting. There's John Bonapres. John, the meeting just started. You? What meeting? County Board Meeting. Just. It's about the county construction project. I don't know if you want to get on WebEx and listen in and comment, but they're doing, Lisa could get you hooked up. I'll call Lisa. Want to listen on mic, Ron? Have you been drinking tonight?
We are live.
Oh, tell you what, don't, don't sweat it. We're just having an information meeting. We're not actually voting on anything and it'll be on the county board meeting this month. Hey, the meeting, the meeting just started. I just called the meeting to order, so I should let you go. Bye. John's at Walmart, just so you guys. In Arizona. Yeah. So I called the meeting in order, didn't I?
Yeah.
Do we have a receive evidence?
The county board supervisor, November 30th, 2021, meeting notice and agenda was posted, the government center building in places posted on the county website on November 19th, 2021, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of November 22nd, 2021. In addition, on Friday, November 19th, 2021, at 11:42 a.m., the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meetings to supervisors and media via email or
Is this a proper notice? Yeah. A roll call?
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Wardell.
Here.
Chris Nelson. Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Mike Pritchard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Fran Duncanson. Russ Arkham. John Bonapres. Emily.
Here.
It's 14 out of 15.
Please. Finds a leave of absence in their documents. Number five, if there's any conflict of interest, bring that up. Six, get approval of the agenda tonight. Motion to. First, second. Any other discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
We got number seven, matters offered for adoption on the consent agenda, consideration, correction to the publish. Corrected minutes from November 9th. We have a motion to approve that. Any discussion? Supervisor O'Connell.
What was corrected?
A Lisa corrected. One was a dollar amount was, I think it was talking about a motion for 5,000 and it was really 10,000. No, there's a correction in just a result or an amendment. I think it was Supervisor Rowdy's amendment to kinship. And then the other one was a some information on Corporation Council's comments about the county board, voting on county board chair's position.
Okay.
That Supervisor Rowdy's deal a couple of months ago. Two months.
Thank you.
That's all that was corrected. I'm aware of. Another discussion? All in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
There he is. So we have number eight, presentation by PMA Investments regarding financing options for government center remodel project. So, PMA. Is it PMA doing that?
PMA, it's Brian Dell on the video screen. This is our, PMA Investments, our financial advisor for the county. Been our financial advisor for some time. I'll turn it over to Brian.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Good evening. We sent over a presentation today and if I will do my best to share my screen. Can you guys see the presentation?
Yeah, just make it full screen there, Brian. There you go.
Okay, great. All right, well. You know, I was just looking at my files and, you know, we were here in July of 2020 talking about this and then we're here in July of 2021 talking about this. And, you know, as your, as your project gets closer to fruition, we're, you know, better start speaking a little less theoretically about the bonding and more, you know, get into some firmer numbers. So that's what we're going to talk about today. Yeah, this just, just for, you know, to remind you, this is the, this is the list of bond issues that you've done since 2000. Done seven of them and you have one outstanding. And that's the 2017 promissory notes. And, you know, PMA was the financial advisor on that issue and Bremer Bank provided the financing. So that's the one, you know, substantial debt issue you have outstanding. You know, as we talked about before, there's really four major options for providing financing or funding options for, for capital project of this magnitude, you know, one would be the capital markets. So that's when you go out and you get a rating and it's, you know, it's the most common method for financing large projects. And it would really be required of a, of a, of a bond issue, you know, more than 10 years. It's, you know, really required to go out to the capital markets. You know, in the, the thing about the capital markets is they're very efficient. You know, if you, if you give the, the markets essentially the kind of standard terms and conditions that they've become accustomed with, that they offer very low rates. You know, partially because these debt issues can be sliced and diced to different investors with different needs. And it helps lower the overall cost of your financing. And so, you know, you've done some of these in the past, as shown on the previous page. A local bank loan. This is something you also have done and it did, this happened in 2017. And they're just generally, you know, 10 years and less and usually the smaller the amount, definitely the more applicable it is to go with, you know, a local bank. And of course, your, your local bank's appetite for, for providing funding. Sometimes they've got cash they need to put to work and sometimes they have less. So, you know, something, it just depends on their appetite to provide financing and what kind of terms and conditions they, they need or, or asking for. Direct placement, now that's, that's sort of when we expand the list of banks to more national banks. But a step below the capital markets. And then the state trust fund loan program, we won't get into that today, but that's, that, that is a program the state will loan out money. But that's at a substantially higher rate than what you could get from either a bank or the capital market. So, you know, no need to, to do, to do something like that for the county, especially for such a large project. So we're just going to focus today on the capital markets and the local bank loan options. So, you know, this financial advisor, you know, how does, how does the typical process work? Well, you know, the first step is we're going to review your existing debt. You just have the one 2017 notes with Bremer and there's 7.2 million dollars remaining through 2027 at a rate of 2.55%. Now, the county, if it's just managing its levy, the county can prepay this debt issue with Bremer. But it can't just refinance at a lower rate until December 1st, 2024 or thereafter. So 24, 25, 26, and 27, those final four maturities. And as mentioned, PMA serves as the financial advisor and Bremer Bank provided the financing. So what do we know about your current needs? I've been told the project is estimated to come in at 8.2 million. You know, you, you basically have one choice is should you borrow the full 8.2 million? Or should you reduce the borrowing by applying some fund balance? Or you know, the, the, the other, the other thing with the fund balance is, you know, it doesn't, the option isn't apply it now or never apply it. You could always apply it down the road on some of your other capital needs. I, I think that if you're just, you know, asking an opinion, we're in a pretty spectacular time to be borrowing and I've said that a number of times over the last decade, but it, it really is a good time to be borrowing and you know, maintaining your, your annual payments at the 2.4 million, keeping up your strong reserves really puts the, the county in a, in a strong position. Financially, it offers a lot of flexibility. You want to, if you want to use some fund balance, that's fine, but I guess it would be, you know, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect us in any way. But I guess I would just lean towards keeping that fund balance for a rainy day because it is, you're going to the capital market. Well, I shouldn't say that. You're going to borrow. Why not use, instead of using a million dollars now and borrowing 7, 7.2, why just save that million for a, a million dollar project in a year from now? Because you're not going to be going through this process necessarily at that time. You may or may not. So that, that's just a little aside. And, you know, speaking of future financing needs, we had updated the, the presentation you saw before. And before it was, you know, borrow 6.4 and then borrow 2 million, you know, on an ongoing basis. But since you increased it or it has been increased to 8.2 million, you know, now you're looking at borrowing 1.7 going forward. And if you do that, you can keep your annual bar, you can keep your annual total debt service at 2.4 million. So, you know, in the back of your mind, you can borrow 8.2 today. And then you can borrow 1.7 on average going forward. Still keep that 2.4 ceiling that I know the county has become accustomed to. So as the evaluation process, you know, as financial advisor continues, just want to let you know that, you know, we're agnostic on the source of financing. There's trade offs between the different sources and the county board needs to decide, you know, which, you know, which criteria it's going to use to decide on where it gets its funding. Now, there's, there's pros and cons to the capital market and there's pros and cons to the local bank. So yes, you know, yesterday I, I received a copy of the, a, a three-page proposal from Bremer Bank. And so I've used this to, to kind of talk about is that we're comparing where interest rates in the capital markets, where interest, you know, what has Bremer offered? You know, what, what kind of amortization did they put forth, which doesn't necessarily need to be followed, but you know, we'll, you know, we'll just talk about what they provided. Presumably it would be tweaked. Because it's just, you know, I mean, obviously our long-term financial planning is that something they're, you know, you know, probably overly familiar with. So this is based on my understanding, obviously the capital markets in which we're in on a, on a weekly basis. And then the bank loan, which was provided by Bremer to the county yesterday and I received a copy yesterday. So the thing about capital markets is I just said earlier, it's really the lowest borrowing rate. Even though there's fees, even when those, when, when you build in those fees, it's still the lowest borrowing rate that, that you can get on your money. However, there's limited flexibility. You know, when you issue debt, a 10-year note, it's typical that you wouldn't be able to prepay for seven years. So it's usually only the last two or three maturities that can be refinanced if you want those really aggressive rates. So that's the trade off with that, lower rates, but you have less flexibility about the ability to refinance in the future. So for some places that are, especially the ones that are issuing every year, you know, you don't, you don't, you don't need that much flexibility on any one debt issue because you've got all these debt issues that you're managing. So that's how, that's how they, that you can, you can you know, that, that's how you can get flexibility in aggregate with even if any single issue has a little less flexibility. And then there's some annual reporting requirements. When you, because you're issuing securities. A bank loan, now the pros on that is obviously it's local and you've got much greater flexibility to restructure, prepay or refinance that, that agreement because, you know, banks are generally, if they're just holding onto this loan, they're, they're willing to negotiate very often on, on these provisions. Now, the, you know, the downside to that is if you want this extra flexibility, you almost always have to pay a higher rate. And now the question is, is that trade off, a higher rate or a greater flexibility, what's more important to you? And we try to quantify that for you today. You know, the best, you know, we think at a give you a really good rule of thumb to compare proposals. So here's the comparison in words. So on the, so going to the capital market, issuing, you know, we call it bonding, but you know, they'd be technically general obligation notes. We estimated the Polk County would be rated in the double A range. And that's based on your, you know, your strong fund balance. And to give you a sense of who else is double A, Burnett, Washburn, Barron, Dunn, Peppin. So I would say that these are peer counties. So it's certainly, you know, with your fund balance and just knowing that these other counties are in the double A range, I think that should give you confidence. That's where you're going to end up. So what we we don't, you know, we can't lock in rates in the capital market a month or two in advance, right? We only know where the rates are today. But if it was today, it'd be less than a 1.5. So let's just call it 1.5. Current markets and going out and getting the rating and that rate built in all the expenses. Now, of course, you're borrowing $8 million, so expenses are really, you know, kind of small on $8 million. If this was a bit, you know, just $1 million, those expenses would become more and more material. But on $8 million, you know, they're, they're on relative basis, a lot smaller. So now on this, if you do this, it's really only the last two or three maturities that can be refinanced. So you really gotta, you gotta you gotta, when you do this, if you do this, you gotta really give it some thought on where, how you amortize. Because you're not going to be able to be, refinance that for quite a number of years. Now I'm going to just I'm going to go to the, I'm going to go to the bank loan now. So so yesterday they, they, what I was given from Bremer Bank was that they offered the county a rate of 2.1%. And based on past history, there would be some flexibility on prepayment. Okay? So but they offered one other thing. They offered the county, if, if they would, if the county would, it, you know, go out to market for $8 million with them and, you know, pay that off over eight, nine, 10 years. They would allow the county to refinance that existing 2017 note at early. So you don't have to wait till 2024. You could actually refinance that in 2022. So you'd really be able to save, you know, three years of, of, of having that, of being able to refinance really, really about, about three years early. So there's a benefit to that. So, so when you, so there's really two things going on. You have a greater flexibility on prepayment, but you got to pay a higher rate. But the other benefit is that they will allow you to prepay that existing loan three years early. So, you know, that is a benefit that you wouldn't be able to get if you went out to the capital markets. So what we're going to do on the next page is just try to give you, it's really, in, in a way, it's really kind of simple on what, on how you can compare these two. And you know, I'll show you. Now, we don't know the final structure. But I, I just wanted to take the the Bremer proposal so you could kind of just see that, how you could, how you could make a comparison using an exhibit that you've been provided. So this is Bremer's proposal and you can see the 8.2 million and they came up with this amortization schedule. And just put in 2.1% and you can see the debt service there. So the, the amount of interest is 870, 807,555 between 22 and 30. Now, I also just went out there and did it at a 1.5%. And you could see at that point the interest is 576,000. Okay? So here's how I, here's how I look at this math. You can pay, if you went with Bremer, in this example, you'd have to pay $230,000. And you, and you hit, you know, the loan was paid as, as scheduled, you'd pay an extra $230,000 in interest. However, you know, you would be able to re-save on your refinancing that 2017 loan. Especially because you get to do it early, you know, you'd be able to lock in 115,000 of savings. So this, you know, the cost to be able to prepay it early is about 114,000, $115,000. If you were to use in this example. Now, I don't think we're going to quite do this example, but I kind of also wanted to draw your attention up to the right here. You notice like, it's really a really simple ratio. If you're, you know, if you're borrowing at 1.5% is one option and 2.1% is another option, that ratio is 71%. And that's exactly the ratio you get on the total interest. So you know, you can, you can figure out right away. You know, if there was a new amortization at 2.1% and you just looked at your total interest, we'll just multiply it by 71% and that's, you know, and that's what you would get in the capital markets. So, so that, you, you know, you can, you can do this pretty quick and dirty. Now, just one, so one other, so that's, that's that. So this is this other exhibit. And here you can just see, it's kind of the same thing, but this was a, an amortization schedule that we had come up with on one of our pro formas. Really has an extra year of principal. As it, as it being paid early in the year, February 1st, just to try to get the full 10 years. There's a limit on 10 years. And then here, it looks like there's a little bit more of an interest difference because it's over 10 years and not a shorter period. And the there would be the reef, the the refi savings in this case would be 91,000. Just, just because there's a prepayment that we were planning on. So here the cost looks like about 176,000. So, you know, just for what you were provided, you know, the cost here is about 114,000. I'd say the real cost is probably 176,000. Based on today's market. Just based on what we've been given. That, that's where we're sitting. So that's the cost to have all that prepayment flexibility. And like I said, we're, we're agnostic on, on which way you want to do it and we can run some more particular or specific scenarios for you. But they're pretty much going to look like this. You know? It's kind of what it's going to run you. So I just, you know, one last slide here. You've seen stuff like this before. The green is that 2017 note and the tan are these, you know, future debt issues, that's a number of debt issues. That's not just the 8.2 million, it's, it's future debt issues. But you can see how we, if you slope it down just right, you can lay on and add on, you know, 1.7 million dollar borrowings in perpetuity. You know, it would, when we structure this deal, it would really be good to know if the county was planning on going out and starting any of these 1.7 or similar type borrowings there in 2023. Because if we knew you were going to borrow something in 20, like a small amount in 23, we would structure your debt a little bit differently. No, I know I, you know, can't you know, the board can't commit future boards to do things and you don't have to know right now, but it, it would affect us the way we, we structure this. Because if there's no borrowing in 23, we put a little extra principal up there in 24. You know, and if there is borrowing in 23, we'll leave you a little space for that principal in 24. And of course, there's, there's other options, but I just wanted to put that out there and have you guys start thinking about that and let you know that it would affect on how we amortize this. You know, your upcoming deal. And then the, the last slide, that's just a disclosure. So I don't, I, I guess at this point I would, I'd be available for questions if anybody wanted to ask anything.
Brian, real quick, before the board asks any questions, one thing that might be helpful. There is a cost to getting our new bond ratings. We have to get a renewed bond rating. And there is the professional cost. Can you estimate just roughly for the board? Because I think it's important if they know that rough number because that would, you know, you're looking at 176,000 for that flexibility. But there is the cost for bonding. So you just give a rough estimate of what the, the capital market professional services cost would be for the 8.2 million?
Well, I, I guess what I would say is that the 1.5% includes that cost.
Okay.
Because, and here's the way to think about this and that, and that's, you know, it's a great question and I don't know if I, here, if you just said lowest borrowing rate even after cost of issuance, expenses are considered. I guess what I would say is this, the, when you look at that 1.5, that's the, that's the average coupon rate. Now if I were to show you what the yields were on year one, year two, year three, et cetera. You know, that's, that's like, you know, 25 basis points, 35 basis points, 50 basis points. You know, that's like half a percent, 0.7%, 0.8%. So those early maturities have such low yields and you might be able to, you know, just write, because if you think about on your investment portfolios, obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, but unfortunately, you know, your investment portfolios are probably aren't yielding a lot because rates are so low, right? So this one and a half percent on all 10 years, when you put it on all 10 years, those early maturities are getting a very low rate. And what happens is that because you've got that 1, 1.5% which, what you're paying out to the investors every six months. That it, and since they're only going to require, say, 50 a half a percent, what they'll do is they'll pay you a premium at the time of issuance. And so they'll pay you extra money upfront to get extra interest every six months in the future. So that extra money upfront is used to pay all the, the rating fee. Is used to pay all the, uh, the rating fee, bond counsel, advisor, all that stuff.
Are there any questions? Brian?
Which bond, uh, rating is this from, is this like standards and pores or? Moody's or?
Yeah, so some of, when you, when I, let's see here. Burnett County is standard and pores, Washburn is Moody's. Uh, Barron, Dunn, and Pepin all use standard and pores.
Recommend one over the other, and why?
Most of the time, you will get the same rating from either credit rating agency. Um, there are times and circumstances where maybe. Maybe we sense, uh, that there's some information that might make us think that. One rating agency might, might lead you to a slightly stronger rating. So, most of the time. Uh, like for an example, most of the time, if someone was. Double A, both rating agencies would rate them double A. Um. And the market treats them the same. Uh, but there are times when, um, certain conditions exist where maybe one rating agency might be a double A, and my, and one might be a, a low double A. Okay? Um, at that point, uh, you know, then we, we might make a recommendation. Uh, to go with the one we think is a little higher, that gives you your best chance. Of having a, uh, uh, the highest rating possible.
Oh, I, I was just thinking about how to maximize our healthy fund balance in the bond rating process. Isn't there one of those agencies that's gonna give a little more weight to, um, our fund balance and how healthy that is?
Uh. I mean, that, that is a fair question, I, I don't think that's the metric that would probably be most important. Both count, both rating agencies would, would highly value your healthy fund balance.
President Middleton, you had a question?
Yes, so, I'm just curious, um. With the Bremer thing, it makes me wonder if we do, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Brian or Chad, but does the county do. For the same process that we do with construction bids, where we have an RFP and we let it out there and we get. Votes in, do we do that with other banks? Bremer gave us some numbers, maybe RCU gave us some numbers, I suppose, I don't know. What's the kind of competitive. Shocking that we have for local banks?
Sure, so. That's a very common. Um, to put out a term sheet. And let, uh, banks bid on it. Now, I mean, and, and, and just, just, I mean, it's a really interesting question, right? Um. You know, local governments tend to issue RFPs for things. Um, so when we, you know, as your financial advisor, so, you know, we never buy and sell your bonds, right? We just, we're a consultant. That's why I said, I don't care if you go to the capital markets, you go to a local bank, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me, we're just a consultant. Um. When we, if we, if the county were to go to the capital markets. What we would do is we would put this offering document together, we'd work with bond counsel, we'd. Work with the rating agencies, we, we'd get everything ready. And we put it out to the market, and we would let. The different investment banks bid. On your debt. So, when you use a financial advisor, there's, there's a competitive element. To how your, uh, capital market bonds are sold. Now, um, when there are, uh. We can apply this if you're so inclined, um, you know, you could accept the Bremer offer as it is. Uh, or, you know, we could put a term sheet together where, you know, we're picking the, you know, the amortization schedule. Subject to change, obviously, and we're gonna put the things in there that you find important. And, and we could help you, um, uh, put that together, and we would let you send that out to any of the local banks that you, uh, would like to, uh, you know. Any and all of them presumably give them a chance to. To, uh, to bid on the debt. And they could even bid and, um, you know, they could bid singular, or, you know, if a couple of banks wanted to split the deal, they could do that too. Not if they're gonna follow the exact same terms and conditions. Um, but it's common for us to put these term sheets together and. You know, collect bids and. Um. And, and, and offer a comparison and. Um. The, I mean, the interesting thing is, is, you know, where are you? These, these processes take a little time, so, you know, banks are usually a little bit more willing to. Hold on to, oh, you know, they, I mean, this, this rate might be good for 30 days, I don't, I don't want to speak for anybody, but, you know, banks are usually hold on to the, the rates for a period of time. But the capital markets aren't quite so forgiving, you kind of gotta go. You gotta lock it in one day, and. Can't lock it in until you lock it in. Well, um. So we can monitor where the capital markets are, but, uh, you know, we're, we're, in a way, we're just estimating on, on where they're gonna be next month. So if things change, I mean, if rates in the capital markets went up 20 basis points, and all of a sudden you're borrowing, and you'd have to borrow to 1.7. And the local bank is still at, you know, 2.1, or some local banks compete against each other, and maybe there's one at 1.9, all of a sudden, you know, things. Things just get a little bit more compelling. You know, it's just up to you.
So would you recommend that we do a term sheet?
Well, I would say that. If the county, um, would like to. Uh, if flexibility is important, like if you think you're willing to pay up for flexibility. Then I think it would be smart to, um, reach out to the local banks. Um. Now, remember. You know, when you do the comparison, or, you know, we'll help you with that. You gotta remember that one bank has one of your loans. And can sweeten their offer by allowing you to refinance that loan, so that would have to be part of the calculation on our end.
And, and I think that's. So the question for the board is kind of the policy question. Um, and there's a couple of questions tonight, but one of them is. You know, that's why we have the financial advisors and all, because if you guys say we want you to go. Look at capital markets, then we'll work with PMA. Get the bids out there and get the best rates, if you guys say you want us to look at capital markets. And local banks, then we'll, we'll go out there and ferret out the best rates and the best terms. Um, you know, if they, you say you only want us to look at local banks, then we'll figure out how to do the best. If you're talking about the mechanics regarding like public purchasing. Because we already have an existing relationship and loan, and because they can sweeten it, nobody else can. You know, that allows us to sole source, if you said, okay, we want to go this way with Bremer Bank. We can justify the sole source there. And that's what Brian's alluding to, because they only know. They have the rights to that note, so it, it kind of bypasses that public purchase. Just go ahead.
Uh, just, just a point, if memory serves me right, with the highway loan in Bremer Bank, as we were looking at bonding options and stuff, Bremer approached the county with an offer, and it was a very good offer. With that, um, at that time, Maggie, Byron, uh, did reach out to local banks, but local banks were not interested in such a loan, but. Bremer was with the, uh, offer they gave them.
And that's correct, that's what happened. Did reach out, and Bremer was the only one that wanted to commit, because we were actually in the process. Of going the other route. Bremer came in and said, hey, we'll do the deal, because both the local banks couldn't get close to. Market stuff, and Bremer actually did. And the flexibility issue and. The local, the local bank and all that, so. Mike?
Hand your hand up?
I'm just gonna, I think what you were saying. That was very much last minute, I think we were all in our minds going with the capital markets one, and then Bremer came in.
Right.
Uh, so can we just keep, are you gonna stay on the, on, involved in the meeting until we keep farther, if we have more time? No, he actually asked, I was gonna say, uh, Brian got us early, but he has to present to another county and just finish, or let him go, so.
I think we're okay for tonight. Thanks, Brian.
Sure, and, and obviously, if you have any questions, uh, you know, Chad can get those to me, and we'll. Want to answer your questions, and, you know, we can, uh, go any, any route you desire.
Sounds good, now we got Bremer Bank. Um. Rick is here. To, uh. Some of those questions, I think, that you know we have.
Thank you, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, take care, bye-bye. So I was.
You can come right to the podium there.
Okay. Great. For those of you that I haven't met before, I'm Rick Geis, and I am, uh, market manager, work as a business banking manager for the Northwest Region. I lived in Frederick for a number of years, about 10 years. While back. And now I office out of the Menominee office, but I worked with Scott Wagner, the Amory Market President, to help him with municipal opportunities like this. So we really appreciate the chance to visit with you again. I think I can add a lot to what Ryan was presenting, I liked the information he gave, I thought it was factual in a lot of ways, but. There's some intricacies in terms of the flexibility that I think will shed some light on, um, the option that we're offering. Um, as he stated. Capital market, right now, if you borrow from them, he's estimating 1.5%, that's right now. Um, I'm not sure how long has he shared it all, Chad, how long the bonding process might take before you could close on something like that?
We have in the past, would probably be. Forty-five, 60 days, they say they can speed it along, would probably be. What, what our window looks like.
What I would say from our standpoint is we know you, we have a relationship with you, we can close in 30 days if that's your choosing. And what we're seeing, and I was gonna ask Brian if you had time, is what's the trend right now, we're seeing rates starting to climb up a little bit, so it's something to factor into your decision. Capture this rate right now that Bremer's offering, as he mentioned, we usually do it 30 days at a time and what have you. The other thing I would mention is we're willing to set up the loan so that it is an advanceable loan, so. If you decide you want to go ahead and close at 8.2. You'll have six months, or maybe if you need a longer period. Where you can advance dollars, and if you decide down the road you don't need to advance a full 8.2 million. Then you won't pay interest on that, you'll only pay interest when you advance it. As much as you advance, so that is an advantage, a flexibility, as you may, that we can offer over the capital markets. If I understand that, they typically, you gotta borrow a whole 8.2 million, and the interest starts clicking right at the beginning. Um, another point I would make is. The money you're borrowing through a local bank, whether it's Bremer or any bank, is your taxpayers. We're borrowing out the deposits that they put in here, so I think that has some value. And I work with a number of municipalities who want to deal with. Local bank for that reason. You go through capital markets, it is an outsider investor, not that there's anything wrong with that, there are benefits to that. But from your constituent standpoint, it's nice to be able to offer return on the money that they have. You'll hear from a lot of them, it's really challenging to get any kind of return on your deposits right now. It's quite a unique market. Um. Our expenses are very straightforward, we'd be using a bond council, it'd be about $10,000. So I know, uh, Brian said theirs are incorporated in the rate and what have you, I have no idea what those numbers are. I don't know if you've seen Chad on previous issues, what kind of ballpark figure they typically are.
No, I, we haven't broken down those numbers outside the rate yet.
His. His organization, if you go capital markets, are they. Uh, compensated for guiding you through that process and what have you?
They are, and then their council is.
Whereas if you go directly for me, then he's not getting, he'll still be advising and getting some compensation, but not near as. Significant as if you were a local. Um. And the discussion on RFP, which is a very fair question, we want to be respectful of other local banks, we respect that relationship you have, and as a board. We know you get those questions, why didn't you check with us? And I have talked with our bond counsel on a 10-year issue, we understand it's not required to go RFP. And. As you guys have pointed out, it is a little bit of an unfair advantage because we can offer to reduce the rate on your existing debt, so that offers you a significant savings. That they won't have. And just to shed a little bit of light on their challenges, I worked for a state bank before I was with Bremer, and. They typically have, because of their size, they have limits as to how much they can borrow, so. For Bremer, since we are a larger institution, we can go up to. Forty million dollars with any one client, since we have that capacity, that's sort of unique in the industry. We're sort of that perfect middle size, whereas a state bank has a much smaller borrowing capacity. And the national banks. They may have a bigger capacity, but maybe not the local presence that you might. I would also say that, the, also that, um, Brian analyzed. We were trying to keep that levy, as Chad and, and I talked at that 2.4, so we're flexible. If you would like to have that be lower, or what have you. We're willing to adjust the payment schedule. Uh, however you would like it to be. And I think we, we're demonstrating now the flexibility of what we're offering, and that we're willing to refinance existing debt. Five, five down to. Point one, that's $115,000 savings, so. That's, I think. A significant advantage over going through the capital markets where they're gonna structure that debt. They're gonna be held to whatever terms that they set up at the beginning. With that, I'd open up to questions.
Sure, I had a question, um, you were talking about, um, advancing.
Of the mass volume.
Sure. Sure, um, you had mentioned that, uh, we could draw money. Kind of as an as-needed basis, if we didn't need the whole 8.2 million, we wouldn't have to draw that. Is there an interim rate on that, or is that all at the same rate from beginning to end to close?
Great question, we would go ahead and lock in the rate. I, I just feel it's beneficial if you can lock in the rate sooner right now, given the trend. I did share with Chad a, a recent trend in the 10-year treasury. That I could, if any of you have brought copy to that, it's just starting to pick up, it was really low, even I, I think a year ago, we were looking at. Twenty basis points lower rates, so. Uh, like Brian suggested. That's the challenge is locking it in as soon as.
But can we lock in, on a project like this, how long does it take to get enough that we know exactly what we need?
Uh, we're, we're gonna, the project, I think we're at 60% numbers right now. Uh, 90% numbers are in December, I believe, is the last time I talked to LHB. I think that's the point at which we'd probably be comfortable saying this should be what our number is, is when we get to 90%. And so, you know. Figure if you go with Bremer, you can lock in probably by end of December, capital market, we should be able to lock in by mid to third week, January, I would say. That's just total ballpark, I think that's.
Let me begin with that advancing feature. Say, let's go ahead and lock in 8.2, you still have the option if it's coming better than you're hoping to not advance the full amount.
We see a problem if we wait. Till the, uh. We have the, the 90% number. Or are you gonna say, you know, you're saying in three or four weeks, would that? How long would your offer be okay?
Yeah, I wish I could put this on the screen for you, but this is the 10-year treasury, it's a, the question is, are rates gonna go up?
Or your rate's gonna go up, not everyone else's.
Um, we can hold the rate we're talking about for 30 days.
For 30 days, that's all I.
So we, if we do this by December, I know I can do the 2.1%.
By the end of December, you could stick with that.
Yeah, yeah, and. If, if you need to do January, we'll just record it based on what rates are going. Yep.
Spencer financing stuff, oh, Mike?
Going back to our. 2017 notes with Bremer. At 2.55%. Obviously, we'd be better off paying 2.1% on those. Is, I don't know, in your three-page proposal, or does that address those at all, or?
Do you like to elaborate on that a little bit?
The savings that Brian was talking about, the 115,000, assumes that you keep the same payment schedule and same maturity. The savings that Brian was talking about, the 115,000, assumes that you keep the same payment schedule and same maturity. That way you benefit from the rate reduction. So that results in savings.
What's the balance outstanding on the 2017?
7.2.
Yes, 7.2 million.
Now, in full disclosure, just so the board's aware, we can, you know, we can prepay on the Bremer. So we could also, you know, depending on how we structure our capital market, we could load prepayment, you know, and pay off the higher debt, stretch the 1.5 out and pay off the higher debt with the 1.5. So I mean, there are options in there too. It's not clean prepayment like Bremer's presented where they do a refinance.
I think on day one, you know, that 7 billion came down to 2.1 billion. That basically you're saying.
You mean if it came down to 2.1%?
2.1%.
And you're saying is that we would, we have to keep the new debt and the refinance 15 days apart, so we might do that January right away. But yeah, we kick in the reduction right away. So you'd go from 2.55 to 2.1 and immediately it would reduce your interest count accruing on that debt.
15 million dollars.
Correct. So you're talking 8.2 and 7.2, 15.4 would all be at that 2.1%? Yeah.
That was the question I had, was that we could still refinance it with that 30 days at that standard? True, yeah.
But keep in mind, I'm not jockeying one way or the other right now on this, but keep in mind, there is a cost for that flexibility. It's about $170,000. So even with the reduced rate, if you spot put the market at 1.5, even as 2.1, the cost of flexibility is $170,000.
What I would.
We could also pay this, we could prepay this for the other one we can't. But we have some deals where we can pay in blocks of 100,000, we can prepay, if I remember right.
Well, we can prepay on the Bremer. We were already planning on prepaying an extra 1.1 million this year. We can prepay on the Bremer. We can't refinance on the Bremer till after 2020.
We haven't come again.
Unless Bremer agrees to refinance early.
Okay.
And Chad, to clarify one thing, the number you threw out for savings assumes that Bremer's going to advance all 8.2 right on day one, which we're going to allow you to advance over time. So that will reduce that savings?
And that is an advantage because it's like a credit line. So just like a HELOC, when you draw HELOC, you don't pay interest until you pull your HELOC.
For example, like if we would, next year, the project's not done, we get ARPA funds again. We could, the board could come back and revisit it and say, hey, we want to dump another million dollars of ARPA funds into the project and only borrow 7 million.
Right.
Right? And you guys are going to work with us on those kind of situations if we decide to do it.
And then that's, you know, it's offset a little bit because, you know, exactly, you're not paying interest on it, but it is offset a little bit because just, just for transparency, you pull the 8.2 million from the capital market, it sits in our bank accounts and earns whatever rate it's at until you spend it. So that gap does close between what you're paying in interest and what you're drawing on interest. So it's not, it's not a clear gap because it's offset by the interest.
I am charged here. I didn't see any calculation of savings from refinancing the 7.2 million.
Yeah, he did show it to us.
It's on, uh, yeah. He gave two different scenarios of it.
Talked about.
8.2 million on the.
It was 1115 to 170. He talked about them both.
It's 78.
Yep.
Single number, I believe, in right towards the bottom, right?
Right.
Yeah.
One is based on a nine payment, one is based on a 10 payment.
Does everyone understand the financing options? Are we ready to move on? Okay, let's do the next item agenda. LHB, thank you.
I'm available for questions after.
Perfect. Think that'd be helpful. So you're going to stick around?
Yep.
Thank you.
Which one is it?
Yeah, you've got several.
Well, we, this, tonight we have Ann Porter from LHB again to present. The presentation is going off of the one we had last, just expanding a little bit on it. Also, in the back, I brought folk my facilities manager.
Can you dump it?
Yeah, technical questions on, I can answer on the systems that we currently.
One question, Mo, I thought we were going to be beyond, we were at 60% a month ago. We're still sitting at 60% today?
We're more closer to 80. Our drawings are, deadline is the 6th of December. So you're seeing, I have updated drawings with me. I mean, it'd be a lot of detail to go through. So what I've done is taken the last presentation and added more content to clarify and.
I'm just curious, Chad said he was more comfortable until we're at 90%. Got drawings or is that budgets?
So the next step for pricing would be that Lachler Construction, who we consulted with, will take our 100% drawings and put a number to it. The thing that I would question is, is they're also a contractor, they would not be bidding on the project, but is it better to just take that 100% drawings, get it out for bid January 6, and wait that four weeks to get your final number? That's your hard number? Unless you want that additional security, you would get their number by the end of December. So they're going to get the drawings on the 16th, Lachler Construction, they would price it starting the 16th and try and get it to you. Obviously, there's the holidays over that time. Do we have a better 21st? I'm sorry, Chad. I mean, if there's a, if there's a hard deadline that we would need to work with.
My question is, is you hired a construction company or are they a project manager?
They, they are a construction company. They have an estimation team that work with architectural firms to do this type of thing of analyzing drawings, giving feedback, pricing. But they do have a construction component.
How accurate are they?
Uh, we've worked with them on numerous projects and that's why we consulted with them, because of their accuracy. They know the market very well. Right now, they do have a 15 to 20% interest or upcharge on their unit prices because of the market that they're seeing. Versus other contractors I've worked with.
Don't put that much in there.
They weren't, they weren't doing us justice and now we're having to pull out scope because we I feel comfortable with the, with the prices they prepared at 60%.
You're comfortable with the number we're at now? So there'd be no reason to wait?
I would say let's get the numbers out there. That's what the other benefit that will go into detail for those alternate, deduct alternatives, is you go in. And then if there is, for some reason, we're over, you do have those five alternates that you could pull out to give us flexibility. Get us within budget.
In the budget now that you have, you have 20% built in of extra dollars due to inflation?
20% due to inflation, correct. However, he was very specific to say that that is only through February because it is constantly changing, so that 20% might go up. And some things are 15 and some things are 20, so it's not an overall 20.
Sure.
Specific to the division of what the scope falls into by, by those specific contracts. So they fine tuned it based on put that presentation of final design board update at the top of the list.
There's a million six while you're looking at this, just so we there's a million six of fluff in the job. Call it fluff, but you call it inflation or what do you call that 20%?
I would say it's an inflation factor, yeah.
And then so there's a million six in this $8 million budget. So if we, if we didn't need that fluff, this project would really be, instead of 8 million, whatever, it'd be 6 million something.
Keeping in mind that the 8.2 does include soft costs, our fees and moving fees, abatement costs, machining, those types of things. So just keeping that in mind. But yeah, if we come in and we're sitting at right the prime time and we get really good.
This could be below $7 million project.
Potentially, it's that hard knowing what we're going to come in. But it's a nice sized project. I think you're going to get a lot of interest.
Let's tell upload now.
It looks like it's done.
Once and for all, I need to make the optimistic. Well, and I know government always spends every dime and if we borrow 8 million, government's going to spend it all.
Somebody bust your bubble. But Chad, you know, listens to this stuff a lot.
You're not going to bust it, Ben.
Ben, your old pal did mention the day the signal, I guess you could say, that interest rates are going to start falling. There is a, one appear. Second one, so. Be where the, somebody touch the screen over there. We say, collects it. Right? That's okay.
Have to ask you to.
This one right here, final design.
All right. So you have the packets of information, I believe, and it is a lot of content. Some of it's things you've seen already, so we'll try and get through it and feel free to ask questions as we go. I think that'll be the best approach. So going to the next slide is a process update. Again, just reminding you that we have the 60% final drawings, which you were asking about. Those were issued on October 22. We had some scheduled meetings, phasing discussions. That's when the cost estimate was done, was November 5. So we've been making a lot of progress since that time, continuing to work. We did present on November 9 and then we had a follow-up meeting on November 5. Overview, so you can see here that 100% drawings, as we discussed, is due in December 16 is our internal deadline. That is going out for quality control. We could issue it for bid. However, I would suggest that putting drawings out for bid right before the holiday season is not an ideal schedule. I don't know if you can speak to that, but often contractors aren't always looking at it as closely. They put it off until after the holidays and then they're scrambling. So our recommendation is to take the drawings through quality control. It gives us one more round to look through all the details within those drawings and specifications. Put, put together that front-end solicitation and then get it out for bid on January 6, right after the holidays, after the New Year holiday. It also allows, if you choose, to have us go back for one round of final pricing on those 100% drawings. The bid drawings would then be due, that we'd like to give a three to four week time period. We have not set a deadline yet, but that would be either the end of January or early February that those prices would come back. We would then present the, we need to vet the bids, so the bids come in. We work with Mo and his team to review those numbers. We do some follow-up calling, actually a lot of follow-up calling to make sure they're confident. Those contractors are confident in their numbers, that they didn't miss anything, are going to come back for change orders. And then we would make the recommendation at the March board meeting. And then construction would soon begin with shop drawing reviews, contracts, that would begin in April. And then construction would start through, for December of 2022. There's obviously employee, you know, shuffling and phasing, and those are part of the early phases, first couple of months would, things would start demolition and moving people. So getting into the budget update, as you can see, the board approved the 7.7 million. The 30% cost estimate, LHB's estimate ourselves, were coming in at about 7.9 million. And this is where we really felt it important to bring in Lachler Construction to validate the market because it is, it is so volatile right now. At 60% in November, they were coming in at 8.2 million. That is our total project budget cost. And then I did add a line item because we did start talking about some added scope. These are some things that would be nice to do that have come up in the few last couple of months of the design process. And with those things, which I'll go into detail on what those are, that would push us to 8.5 million. So keeping that in mind, with some of these alternates that give us flexibility in our, in our budget, some are added scope and some are deduct added scope is 8.5. So keeping in mind, I'll breeze through this, but we already talked about 15 to 20% market increase or inflation. There is a 4% construction contingency. Keep in mind that that contingency is on just the construction cost alone, not on the total project budget. 2% owner designer contingency, realizing that there might be some things in the drawings that have not been vetted. We would keep that number in there, however, as we work through the drawing for the owner contingency as well for some flexibility. Soft costs are included, estimated values. This is where he was saying that the numbers he shared are only good through February of 2022 because the market is constantly changing right now. It is a confirmed nine-month construction duration and then the reminder that the roofing installation is out 300 days. So that is a long lead item that we're going to have to work into the schedule.
Can I ask a question about that one? So is the pricing going to keep, you know, if inflation keeps going up, that roofing thing could get?
The roofing thing is, is only in the fact that once you lock in on your contract and they submit a price, they can't keep increasing it. That's not how it works. So they lock in, we would write those contracts, or not we, but Mo, you know, and his team would be in direct contract. That would go in in February or early March, actually after you approve it in March, and then they're locked in.
So the roofing really probably would not be done till 2023?
So the main thing with that is, is as soon as you lock in your contract, then they can order the material and then that's when the clock starts for 300. You've already purchased the materials, just when they can get it here to install it. And we may get lucky and you may find a contractor that has it readily available. It's just what they're seeing across.
As an owner, I was speaking for the owners, first thing I would say is find a different roofing product and design. There's no way I'm going to wait 300 days. That's what they're saying, 300 days? What if it's 400 or 500 days? So why wouldn't we look at a different option?
Well, we can.
Lots of rots out there.
Look at that. The problem is, is that the state, the Wisconsin State Code requires more insulation than what you currently have. And so we need to increase the insulation factor to meet the R value and then get the proper slopes. So even if, even right now, we're doing a ballasted roof system with the rock over the laid EPDM. Even if we went with a fully adhered EPDM, you're going to need the insulation below there. Otherwise, if we look at like a tarred roof, you know, that's also going to need the insulation. So I'd have to go back and talk to our architects. Don't brainstorm and Lachler could provide input as well. But it's.
Would you do that, please?
Yeah, definitely.
Because that's the one thing in the project, to me, I would just not go with the product for that reason.
You do need to make sure we're providing.
I'm not saying don't need code.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I know there's more than one way to put a roof on a building.
So we'll look at it. If you have any input that you.
I don't.
Okay.
I just installation option to see if there's something else besides that type of insulation that's 300 days.
Yeah, I'll go back and ask him.
And if it changes the budget, you know, enormous amount, that obviously waves out. Because my question is, is in the construction budget, then everyone that's going to be going through the roof, making roof penetrations, we're going to have a lot of money in the budget for patching this existing roof.
Have things that were set and reset.
Yes. And so, you know, there's probably some value in there of not delaying it that long. Where a roofing contractor could be following the scope of work at a better schedule, where there's not going to be these extra dollars in the budget for all this reset work.
I'll go back and bring that back to Lachler. That's why we have them on the team to provide that input. All right, going on to the next slide, this is just a reminder, you presented it originally when you approved the 7.7 million in those buckets of must-do, recommended and smart-to-do. And I forgot the slash there, but we also have the, I thought that said additional scope, but hard to approve. And that was broken up into really three disciplines, architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, and that's what we're going to go into. So as we look at the scope, keep in mind that the number you are seeing of the 8.2 million is the total project budget. That includes these items here in the base scope. So these, this is why we're calling it deduct alternate. So this is what we're asking the contractor to price it and list it on their bid form in separate numbers so that if we come in over budget, we can say, you know what, that was a nice to do, smart to do. We don't have to do it. We're going to take it out to get us back within budget. So all of the exterior windows in the building, I know we do have some that are really troublesome, but we were looking at doing them all at the same time with this base bid scope. Building automation and HVAC upgrades, this is just in the human services building. We would still do them in the government center. The third is department center for service. The third is department center for service windows, those are those guest service windows that we're adding for security purposes in the lobby. And then fourth being this room, doing some finish upgrades and reconfiguration of the seating and technology coordination, and then fifth, committing the exterior lighting replacements. So there are, I do have some numbers in here of the total scope of that, but we did have some security upgrades for lighting. So the added alternate design scope, so these are things that are above and beyond the eight point two million, they're the things that would be pushing us to the eight point five. So departmental renovations, that is some of the things we talked about, about last time, of moving some of the departments from human services or up from the lower level to get them more on an accessible level for guests that are coming. And then the generator, we did price an option for providing a generator that could power the entire building, including human services, and we have some points to talk about of benefits, why you would consider that. Pre-cast panel, you had brought that up at our last meeting, we did some investigate, well, I shouldn't say we did some investigation, we have photos of what the existing condition is, our structural engineer needs to find time to come out and investigate that further, so that will not be in the bid package, however, it will be a recommendation would be brought up at that time. And then the boardroom, safe, secure features, this was brought up at our last design meeting, this room, just thinking about safe and secure situations where if the board wanted to get out quickly, what exits are we using? And once you get out, where is a safe place, like a lockdown place that you could go at that time? So I'll show you a drawing, but it would be adding a door in that far corner based on the new reconfiguration of the room, and then adding a, an additional locked door in this hallway, so that as soon as you exit that door, you're in a secured locked area. And potentially even adding an exterior door, so you could eat, rest directly out of the building, so those are some things we're still working through as we work through the final design. So the next is just a visual of how you can see some of those numbers for the deduct alternate and the add alternate, so each one of the slides, as I described, some of the scope will go into that as well. But I guess the thing I'll point out here before we move on is, you can see the mechanical scope at human services building is probably the biggest deduct alternate, that would shave out about a million dollars. So, and some of these are smaller, you know, a hundred, twenty thousand, fifty thousand, three hundred thousand, so it does give a nice amount of variety in the bid values, so that we could adjust the scope. So moving on, this is just an overall floor plan of this main level, trying to highlight some of the areas that we're touching for architectural, keeping in mind overall scope was the ADA toilet upgrades, stair upgrades, a widening of several doors throughout the building, to allow for accessibility of wheelchairs, exterior window replacement, roof replacement, chase insulation, this is the existing chases where the vertical pipe runs are running, and we've had several freeze-ups, so we're actually taking those off, enlarging them to provide the proper insulation, so that we. In future, and then lastly, the boardroom renovation, so that's a general overview of all of the architectural, I guess the one thing that's not on here, which is listed in the added scope, is the departmental shift that we're doing, and some of those service windows. Moving on to highlight the ground level, first floor and second floor toilet room upgrade, you can see here that we're taking advantage of some available square footage, but every floor is slightly different, so every toilet room solution had to be slightly different, but we're able to provide a handicap. Handicap accessible toilet stall while still maintaining the two toilet stalls in the women's, and then shifting the urinal, enlarging the toilet stall in the men's. So it was kind of a puzzle to try and figure out how to meet the code for each level, but I think we're able to do it well. The ground floor, we're having to take some square footage out of the adjacent mechanical room, which everybody seemed to be in agreement that that was the great thing to do, and then on the second floor, which is the next slide, we're taking two single toilets that definitely don't meet accessibility code, and we're combining them into one, so the second floor will have a single handicap accessible toilet that will be available. So going on to the handicap accessibility at the stairs, so your vertical guardrails do not meet code because they're wider than four inches, so we're adding some screening there to prevent anything from falling through, we're also adding new handrails along both sides that continue on the landings and need.
Question about that, are we required to bring things up to ADA standards?
I'd say with the, if you look at the existing building code, there's a certain percentage of affecting the primary function of the building, and that is what triggers you to provide upgrades throughout your entire building, and we are speeding at twenty-five percent. The roof, so we touched on this, so this is the overview of the scope that we're required to do, it is a ballasted roof system with a rock overlay, which is what you currently have, it is increased insulation and meets the R value required, the roof pitch, the overflow drains are not required, and therefore we have to raise the parapet and add. Luckily, your structural support all that, so that is, that was a big win. Customer service windows, these are some elevations of the drawings, as you can see, all of the storefront windows will be replaced with new insulated glazing, aluminum frames, some sandro glass. You have now, and then all of the, you can see those cabinet heaters with the. Lumber there on top, those are all remaining, however, we are putting new solid surface sills on the top of all of those, so they will get an updated look, and that's primarily because, once we pull up the old windows, you're gonna have some gapping and, you know, clean it up to put a new surface on there, so the vents will come off, the new surface goes on, and then the vents go back. This is probably a bigger visual impact that your guests are going to notice and hopefully benefit from, as well as staff for safety, you can see here in the circles are the alcoves that we're adding for the window, the safe and secure window, and then we're also relocating the receptionist desk into a secured alcove as well, so that they're no longer sitting out in the lobby, however, they'll have visual access, and then the customer service window as well to communicate. So we have another slide with some additional perspectives on what that would look like, the other feedback we got here was providing a power for future kiosks that Chad mentioned, that, you know, there may be a guest service kiosk in the future, so we wanna make sure we're thinking ahead, not just for what we need now, so that was a good feedback that we got. So this is some views that you can probably see better in your packet, but this is, you know, what the alcove would look like with the service counter, realizing that there's gonna be a boiling door that will be closed, this is showing the door closed, so when the department is, you know, out hours, we need to provide that security at that opening as well, but it will have a glass with a bulletproof film on it, and then a service window for communicating and capturing. This is what the view is standing in the lobby, right outside of the vestibule, looking in to the human services building, so you can see, and this will actually have a transaction counter at this window right here, or possibly, you know, the front window, we're still working that in, and then the left is where we're punching a new opening for, right here for the alcove for the other two departments.
If you go in the deeds office, this is the access into the deeds office, that will now be kind of an alcove lobby with an extra door here, service window to the treasurer's office, and one to the deeds office, so it's kind of a shared space there with a couple of chairs for customers, gets them out of the lobby, servicing both departments.
And then there is a manpower, if we do this, then the person who's in the receptionist position can also supplement the treasurer's office and the deeds office during their busy times, because they'll be in the same type of space, so it's kind of a, there's an efficiency in manpower we're hoping for.
One for the clerk's office and a window there.
Yes, the clerk's office will have the same thing, as you go into the clerk's office, now they kind of have it set, like they have a little lobby there, that'll be walled off with a service window now, the door will be opened up to approximately four feet, they'll have their own alcove and window also.
Alright, and then this is an updated view of the most current layout for this county boardroom, we got a lot of feedback on the requested number of seats that needed to be provided, and so we revised the layout, so where I'm standing now, I would be facing the main row along the windows, which is this row right here of seating, and then there would be flanked rows on either side, and then there would be guest seating now behind me, so I would be pushed closer to you, but we would have monitors mounted up here in like triangle shapes, so everyone could see them, as well as the spectators that are sitting behind here could be watching the monitors. We are reusing existing technology, audio, I believe Chad, and voice and audio, we would need to purchase some new monitors.
And then on this slide also shows what Ann was talking about, it's a security feature, if you wanted more egress out of here, in case someone came in here and started causing trouble or doing anything, just shoot out, you could add that door in that far corner there, door out this hallway, so they can't go down the hallway, possibly have an exterior door right here, where you can exit and go into safety. It's another idea of security.
Mechanical.
Malia, with that, for our open meeting laws, do we have to have so many doors open and all this, or not?
At least one door open.
What, so that wouldn't throw a curve at us, something that's way old that'll throw us a curve?
The other improvement we're making, just in the fact that we're replacing these doors anyways, is we're going to be swinging the doors out, so as you know, this would be considered an assembly space based on the size and the number of people you could hold in here, and so ideally in an emergency situation, you want your doors to swing in your direction of travel, which, as you can see, these two doors do not. So we'll be reverse, putting new frames in and having those doors flow into the direction of where you would need to go. And then we would have to add exit signs as well to these doors. So this is not my area of expertise, but mechanical systems, as you know, is probably the primary purpose of this project, they're all getting completely renovated, which is why we're having to remove all the ceilings throughout the building, we are going from a pneumatic control system, which Rod can chime in, to a VAV, variable air volume control system, I don't know, Rod, if you wanna touch on something?
It's going to electronic, so we'll be able to get rid of all the pneumatic tubing and the poly tubing and copper throughout the building, and that was what the human services has in, on their side as well, so if any of you have ever been in the mechanical room and noticed that the air compressor runs for five minutes, about every ten minutes, it'll come on, that's what it's feeding, is all the pneumatic, so every place there's a bell, in every heating unit, in every VAV variable air volume box, every air handler, it'll all be electronic instead of pneumatic now, so there won't be any air associated with it. Electronics is much more efficient, pneumatics is, it's a lot more expensive to run in the long, in the long haul.
A lot more maintenance, as we're constantly chasing airways than always.
Some of the other scope on the plumbing side is the domestic hot water research pumps are all being replaced, I'm just reading some notes here, we are providing overflow drains and piping to meet international building code, plumbing fixtures are all being replaced in all of the toilet room upgrades that are being done, so not a whole lot of plumbing scope in the grand scheme of things. The chiller is probably one of the other largest, you know, components of this, new chiller system is designed to seventy percent redundancy for both buildings, and it ties for a hundred and sixty tons, so I know, Rod, we were talking about that at our meeting, so if you had an issue with one, you could.
Right, so there's actually gonna be, they're gonna sit right out here, kind of where the spiral staircase is and the dumpster, so there's a talk of the two chillers and the generator sitting out there, and the purpose of having the two chillers is, in extreme heat conditions, they'd both be running, if we had one go to complete failure, the other one would still be able to do seventy percent of our capacity, so you'd have to kind of pick and choose, make sure that, you know, if it's an eighty degree day with no humidity, it'll cool the building just fine, if it's ninety-five and humid, you'd have to zone off some spaces, cooling the entire building.
Building automation, electronic programming would allow you to pick and choose.
Yeah, and, and my guys could do that right at the computer then.
The existing steam heating system will be demolished and replaced with condensing hot water boilers, and then necessary accessories and specialties, all steam systems will be demolished, including piping, heating, and I apologize, I'm reading off of a different document, heating exchangers, steam and condensate piping valves and traps, so the overall. And lastly, we already touched on the VAVs, so a lot of the existing duct runs that are feeding those VAVs will remain, the main duct runs would be reused, it's just any, some of the department renovations, they'll have, they'll require some modifications, but we're trying to reuse as much as we can, that makes sense, and that is one area to help.
Part of the code requirement too is, some of these up here are all made out of wood, so your common returns are wooden, so those have to be replaced with metal.
Great, any questions on mechanical? Moving on then to electrical, I wanted to throw in some images of what the new LED-like fixtures will be, as you can see, they're by two fixtures similar to this, but they're very thin profile, which allows us to work with a varying height of ceilings and conditions, structure, ducts that might be running over them, so the technology is really advancing, that what used to, you know, require maybe a box like that is now something like that, so it's pretty amazing, the cost has also gone down significantly. So besides the lighting, we're doing a full power distribution equipment upgrade, that will support the new mechanical systems, the generator replacements, security systems throughout the main lobby areas with card readers, that ties into the building automation system as well, so that can be programmed for open and close times or lockdown features. And then exterior lighting, we talked about fire alarm system replacement, and then the interior. Some of the general overall data is another element of, I do have one data update. So I threw in, I did start putting some values from the cost estimate at sixty percent, those are those numbers that you can see on the bottom of some of these pages of what the total value is.
For every floor?
Every floor, yep, in the, in the government center building would be updated. And then I wanted to highlight, this is that alternate number five, this is a deduct alternate, so it's already built into the total project budget, but it would be a savings of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, if at bid date we decide that we just, bids came in high, we can't do that piece, that. But I wanted to include some of the quantities of what you're getting for that value, twelve new entrance wall packs, which are required per code, twenty new light poles, landscaping, sidewalk lighting, and then existing alcove lights would be upgraded as well.
The new, I would say, wall pack, you know, we have these really large lights out there now from nineteen seventies, they, they've come down to a very small wall pack.
Does that first line, is that per code, you have to do the first one?
Yes, you do, yep, yep, it is, we have Wisconsin requirement.
The twelve, not the light poles and everything else?
No, and then keeping in mind that all of the light fixtures that are gonna be new meet the dark sky requirements, so that they're not shining up and bloating for light pollution.
And then I think we were also going to run, when we're gonna run fiber out to the exterior poles, and we could put cameras in the parking lots as part of security, the poles are too far away from the building, we have to run fiber to them.
Good question, so on the state lighting and where, we might touch on it later, but what kind of laws do you think for fixing the site, parking lots, landscaping, contingency did you put after you're gonna replace all the windows, is it gonna be equipment driving out on the grasses?
Yeah, I'd say that comes out of general conditions, you know, that the contractor puts into their number, because they're responsible for the damage that they do and putting it back to the original condition, but we don't, the means and methods, in our opinion, so we've stayed in there that the expectation is that everything, you know, would be replaced. You know, I don't know that, the main area we're focusing on for civil is that utility pad area, where they're gonna be putting the new concrete pads right outside the window here, for the chiller and the two air handling. So otherwise, it's up to them to ensure that things are kept in the condition that. Alright, so going on to the added scope, so these are some of the things that are in that. All right, so going on to the added scope, so these are some of the things that are in that kind of nice to do or smart to do, uh, departmental renovation, this came out of the customer service windows and increasing customer access and accessibility. Um, so I, I'll go through more detailed visuals. Um, also the lobby renovation, we talked about, precast panel investigation, generator, boardroom, um, added door, and then the window treatments. I want, I don't know that I mentioned last time, in the discussions, we had the window replacement, but it was brought up that it does make sense to replace all of the original mini blinds with a mesh, uh, mesh shade, so that you can still see out, um, but it'll, it'll screen and it'll also cut down on the, the sunlight coming in. In this room, um, we would, in any other boardrooms, we would have a dual shade system with a blackout feature, so that you can completely, you know, if you have a presentation, don't have.
One question on windows, and I'm going back, because I didn't ask it earlier. At one time in the beginning, we were not gonna change all the windows, because remember the question being asked, what's wrong with the windows? And it really only seemed like it was an age issue, but there wasn't that many of them failing. Now, why did we all sudden jump to changing all the windows?
It's been the smart to do, and the fact that we're disrupting every department, and you have all the contractors here at this time. So it was the smart to do that, you know, I don't remember that.
What was the number for the smart to do on that?
Um, I go back to, window value for all of them is $310,000 versus, I want to say.
310, and there's nothing wrong with them, but since we're working in that room, let's do it?
Yes, and you are increasing your R value.
What's the R value of them now?
I'm just gonna say, let's say they're eight, and code says 15. So they're about half of what they should be, and so you're gonna have energy efficiency.
What's the energy loss on a half of a window? Is it, when would we make up our 300,000? That's my question. Yeah.
So this is just going off of what we never heard ROI on anything.
Yeah, that's where I'm just, I wanted, I think those are important things for us to know. If someone's gonna suggest we spend $350,000 replacing windows, I'd wanna know, why do we need to replace them? If it's just because it's the right time?
Well, they are past their useful life.
I understand, but there's nothing wrong with them. Past my useful life too. Uh, I, I just, I would want, that's a question I would ask someone to explain. What's the return on that R value issue that you brought up?
I guess.
Someone could answer that. You don't need to do it tonight.
Yeah, now, the thing is, here's my honest answer, is you're, based on the vintage of your building, you don't have insulation in your exterior walls, so you are incre, I mean, you have more than a window, right? With the, the natural material that it is, so, um, it's hard, we don't have.
Be able to do the numbers.
We don't have to do a com check normally, with new construction, we do com check for the state, and that shows the total R value of the building and what we have to meet. We don't tend to model it with existing, um, because.
Why do we do it with the roof?
Uh, the roof is something that we're replacing fully in its entirety, so it is a requirement to get it up to code. But we're not touching the exterior walls as part of this, except for the cheap materials.
The, the efficiency starts adding up if you do everything, not just a little bit. That's like, do we add another door already? Yeah, we shouldn't. I mean, do we need another door there for, we've never been running out of here yet.
Truly in the project and, and looking at the windows that were, that we have problems with frosting and leaking, um.
Are there a few of them? I remember it was just a few.
There's a few, um, I wanna say that dollar amount was around 90 grand or 120 grand to replace the ones up in administration, H R. Biggie ones in zoning for, uh, Tim Anderson's window for that panel problem is, that's leaking. We've one, there's a, there's random here and there with.
If you talk to the window manufacturer, they'll tell you, they could look at these windows and tell you exactly how much savings you would get. That's part of their spiel, that's what they do. They're the window expert.
Yeah, aren't you?
I am. And replacing 1974 windows with 2021 windows, it's a huge difference in savings. I can tell you that for a fact. I don't, I can't give you the number, but I know people who can.
We'll look into it. The other thing I'll mention is.
They're metal, they're a metal frame window, there's no wood in them, and it's glass. That's all it is, it's not an Anderson window where you got a lot of pieces to it.
Yeah. I'm just questioning it.
You can't replace a one for one window, let's say there was only one window that's trouble in Chad's office, for example, that's giving us trouble because it's a, a storefront system and there's spandrel, spandrel glass standing multiple stories. You have to replace, that's why that number is like 120 versus just coming in and popping in a new.
That's why the project just keeps growing, I get it.
Yep, yep, it is hard to do just little pieces. Um, all right, so departmental renovations, there's land, water, and you go the extension on the ground floor. Uh, level one is veterans' services, one government, both departments that are.
That was for security, that was our customer centric to get, um, our, our veterans, our elderly, everyone coming in on the main floor of our, our main customer facing, um, departments. So that, we had one, one contact coming in, and we didn't have people coming around the building, and we didn't have veterans going upstairs and downstairs, nor the elderly going upstairs. We brought them all onto this level, and we were able to do that with these moves. Um, some of the configurations of land and water going down to where behavioral health is, right now that's set up for behavioral health, there's a lot of little intake rooms. We need to change that for their office scope, on how their office. Uh, the same thing with the extension office down the hall here. Um, we're taking over, there's an A and B conference room, we're taking one of those conference rooms and making more offices. So A R C requires so many offices that we need to add a couple more walls there. And behind the wall with land and water is where the vets office would go on this corner down there, with their meta health person, uh, Gail and Andy, that the veteran, the fair officer, and their storage passes that they need. We just needed to wall that off, partition that off, or statue, so their, their departments is alone. So and that, that brings all our customers through here, um, at a one point contact, um, that they don't have to go upstairs and downstairs. All the service will be down this one floor.
How many people actually come to those two for land and water and zoning have probably five times the amount of people?
Uh, zoning and land and water are, land, zoning will have their own, uh, service window up here.
Land and water, those work together with all these permits and stuff, so they get to go up and down?
Uh, up and down, it depends on, it depends on, on how they're facing and how, how the department schedules people in there. There will be intake rooms up here that they can meet customers on this level. Um, not to say there won't be that occasion where they have to escort a customer down to their office to go through.
But they're, both, they get higher usage than, than the veterans in that or not?
No, land and water does not, zoning does, zoning gets a lot of use, that's why they're up on this.
But nobody comes into land and water?
They do. They do, okay. But the vets and A D R C is where we're trying to accomplish. So you're dealing with vets and you're dealing with elderly.
How many come in though? How many people, I mean, are we remodeling this many things for six people a week, one a day? Or how many people come in?
A lot. The vets office, quite a few.
Every time I go down there, there's people in there.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, I mean.
I try to schedule appointment with the vets and, and his schedule's full every day.
Okay, so that's what I'm wondering, it's, I mean, some people say a lot, and if two people show up in a, in a week, it's a lot, so I just wondered.
Got a number for you, Kim.
Obviously, that's what I thought, we had the gal out front counting stuff where they went, but I guess they don't.
No one knows what a lot is.
Oh, but I mean, we had the gal sit out front in that desk.
What does a sewer cost? A lot?
Yeah. Today it doubled. Today it doubled, but I mean, we had the gal sitting out there, we asked her to keep track of where everybody was going, that's, that was kind of her job, I thought, part of it. Say, okay, you're going to register, Dean, you're going to zoning, you're going here. That they were gonna kind of keep track to give us accounts, so we knew what was happening.
You did on a good thing with security, and that's part of what we're looking at, you know, as we get that person in there. And actually, when you typically go into a government building, or counties even, you sign in, you sign out.
Oh, you go through a detector.
You go through a detector, but you sign in, you sign out.
Not in St. Croix.
County, you don't sign in and sign out.
Oh, you don't?
St. Croix, you go through a, uh, go through a metal detector, and then they have the windows like, like they're doing here, that's what St. Croix. So they have two guys, two officers out there all the time, standing there to go through.
Question has come up also.
About that.
To the detectors.
Or the other building might be.
St. Croix County, the courtrooms are inside the same complex.
Upstairs, yeah, that's the jail.
That's why they have core security downstairs.
Yeah. But can that be built in here so that we, we're ready for it?
You know, I think that's, I think that's one of the questions is, is, you know, you're walking us through this, and I have the same questions. I don't know that we've really gotten a good take on why are we doing all this? Like Kim said, what's a lot? Not one person's answered, what's a lot?
By that, what's a lot?
That's the question, O'Connell. That comes to the. You're asking the board to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to move a department or a lot of people that show up, and the question gets asked is, what's a lot? And no one's answered what that number is. I, I'm just curious why no one can answer his question.
Can't the departments answer that?
They're here.
Well. Someone should be able to answer that.
Yeah, I think, having been to, I have an exact number, but we know the.
Close.
What, and the vets, 10 people a day?
Yeah.
Uh, 10 or 12, I don't know, you got two people and you, sometimes they come with couples, they wheel the wheelchairs down there.
My house, I need someone now, just gave them a number.
That's, that's, because I come up and get permits a lot, and I'm, there's only three cars in the parking lot. And I'm here maybe for an hour and a half, nobody else comes in or not. So that, then you say 10 people come in, they almost come in in the morning or different times, but, but I, I mean, there's a lot of things, I'm the only truck at the parking lot.
A lot of times they go in down there because of the wheelchair factor.
Using a different door and a different person, not now, but historically.
They're not supposed to now. Now, A D R C will have some because they pick up equipment and so on, and that kind of one. Um, A D R C has more than that, because you may have eight, 10 people with A D R C down there, people coming to visit all of them. And, and if you recall, the whole purpose of this was to, to enable those people who have the most difficulty. If you stay out there, you've seen the people and, and the elderly couple trying to push into that elevator to try to get down there, it's an issue. But we thought, what makes it more customer friendly for those people who need it the most? And then for the clerk, the treasurer, and the deed, where people are coming in for business there. Now, you young buck, uh, contractors and stuff, yeah, you might have to go down the elevator once.
That's why we got stairs. The elevator was, was, we can't even use it so bad. Is that getting redone too or not?
Elevator's not, just the, I think it's, um, communication.
So we're gonna work all the way around it, our, our elevators?
We have a handicap elevator, um, uh, down the hall here, so we don't have to upgrade.
We don't have to upgrade this one.
Just the buttons don't need code for, um, and the communication, yeah. I'm not.
We're gonna build all the way around it, we're gonna build all the way around it and leave an old elevator in the hallway. Okay, that's why I use the stairs.
To pick our priorities, right?
We got stairs.
So the thing to keep in mind with this is, these are going to be in the drawings, so the floor plans will reflect the, the shuffling of people and the new walls that are required. However, it's being bid as an alternate, so the contractors have to provide a separate number outside of the base bid. So then you will have the option either to accept or reject that, once you see the final number. So you still, after bid day comes in February, you can say, you know what? We're more comfortable with everything that's in the base bid scope, we don't want to proceed with this reconfiguration. And then the drawings are gonna be there for the future, which is to be at a different time. And then the, the estimated cost was about $120,000 to do those sh, those shuffles. Some finish upgrades, the new walls, new doors, and new power.
It's a way not to, to put up full walls, that we can put up partitions for now, and stuff like that, in case we want to change something back. For any of these walls, if we're gonna got a big room and take all walls out and put a new wall in.
Well, it's tied to the HVAC and the, and the mechanicals, when you do an office space.
Yeah.
Uh, so with the, with the new office layout, with the office layout, so the changes, we have to put the tough work into those offices to change them now. Otherwise, if you put temporary walls up there, mechanics will stay the same and not heat efficiently. And then if you wanted to stay that way, then you'd have to go back and redo the mechanicals again, put up a permanent wall.
Most of those here, like A D R C, they need privacy when they're having their conversations, because they're talking.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they need walls and doors.
Um, going on to the next added scope was a precast panel investigation. Slides in, I just wanted to show some photos that Mo sent me, um, some of its history here. It helps that provided to us that we need to get a future site visit with our structural engineer and possibly a group party consultant for precast. Uh, they, it will be outside the bid scope at this time, uh, there is a false louver here that's hiding, um, some original investigation hole that was cut 15 years ago. Uh, the noted concern was the metal tabs were broken or cracked, and then it was potential concern for water. So it's something that we need to, um, re-investigate.
And you can see that panel shift it, you can see where the shadow line is, that panel has. That was a entry hole where they drilled into the panels to see what was behind it, that Ben doesn't, except hide that hole.
Actually did that 20 years ago.
Yeah. It was before current maintenance staff was here on that, so we need to do further investigation to see what needs to be mitigated behind that panel, we get that to work. But Tim Anderson's office is, um, near here, and there is water issues there.
Cut it out, what are we doing?
Just did an attribute warranty work anyway.
Yeah. He's got the panel loose, she might as well take it off and put a new one in.
Construction at the time, so I was just an employee, Rock.
Our last added scope is the new, uh, base bid generator, which is already in your contract, which is providing life safety features, um, have the list here, so that I can give you an accurate description. Um, your current generator that we've designed is a 250 kilowatt natural gas generator. Uh, it's providing life safety power for exit signs, egress lighting, fire alarm systems, um, optional standby power for HVAC equipment, select receptacles, network equipment, I T cooling, and other direct equipment. So it's really your base, base needs.
And vaccine.
And vaccine.
Vaccine and vaccine.
Um, the added scope alternate is for $175,000, you could size the generator to 350 kilowatts, and it would be sized to, to support both the government center and the human service building. So you could maintain fully operational at any situation. And the benefit that we talked about with that is that it could, uh, potentially provide options for P M grants and warming facilities, um, that you could use this building as a warming facility for your community. Um, however, it does not provide cooling, so your chillers would not be covered by your generator. That's more of a, you know, amenity, that it's just not cost effective to support a generator to from those.
As a warming facility, it'd be more like a winter disaster that would happen, that would not power out to a large grid of Polk County, be whatever that storm would be, that you could utilize this as a, um, warming facility. There aren't, aren't P M grants available for that emergency management type system, so, um, it is an option to upsize.
That's $175,000 in addition to the base generator costs of our. Um, so the last slide is just next steps. Obviously, we need direction on confirming, confirming the base bid scope, confirming the alternates of added scope and deduct scope, so that you're giving us confidence that some bid day, uh, January 6th, we have everything that you want or don't want in the project. Um, so we will also be providing final drawings, uh, December 16th, for final feedback, that anybody that wants to see those can review those. Um, and then working with Mo's team to get that front end bid solicitation document posted back.
Will be done before the December board meeting?
Uh, so, no, no, it will not.
November 16th was what, was it?
That's our own deadline for the 100% drawings, they go to final review at that point. Um, I am presenting December 14th, so I, or I'll be here at the board meeting for if you choose to make that final decision then. Um, however, we're two days away from producing 100% drawings.
And this will go to, um, I believe it's on general government.
We will put it on the general government.
But we will put it on the general government agenda to.
In December.
Yeah, so what are you guys gonna, if you could give the board, the rest of the board, the expectations of what you're gonna ask them to do at the next board meeting?
Uh, the next board meeting would be to, um, would get approving the project, um, for, uh, the bid scope that we're looking at. The key questions are gonna be, do you want to bring on the generator, generator to hold, hold you in the bit, uh, building is, is one big one. Um, the rest of them, we show it as alternates. Um, look at that price as an eight point two, still gives us the ability to, um, go off for bids, uh, move forward with the project. If the bids come in too high, um, we can go back and ask you, um, which ones of those you want to deduct, or do you still want to move forward with the project? By, um, it's coming under and you want, still want to do the whole project.
So what, I got a question, if the bids come in too high, but we still want to do the project, how do we finance that if we lock in now? A, a certain number? Can you go back and remember and say we need another five hundred thousand?
No, we could, but I mean, the rate's gonna, it's gonna be the spot rate at whatever time we did that and open it back up. But that's actually a question for Rick. So just like when you lock in on a mortgage, if we lock in, is there gonna be a penalty if we open it up?
Can I say something about bonding and, and that? The way we set, if you remember back, the way our, way our bonding set with, and our debt services set at that two point four million dollars. That keeps our levy flat. And even borrowing, uh, eight point two million, um, which wasn't highlighted in his presentation was. When he said you could still borrow annually one point seven million dollars, that borrowing one point seven million dollars. Every year in maturity going forward, without raising our debt service, even our levy where it's at, our debt service. So there is mechanisms to do that. Um, the other factor that's out there is the ARPA funds, possibly the next system coming through to cover different costs. But with the bonding in that, we are sitting very good with our debt service and, and allowing us to move forward and, and go for future projects. Not wanting to be a.
How much interest does the county pay annually on the, um, if we're borrowing two million dol, if we have two million dollars of debt a year? What's our interest payments a year?
I think our interest is, I think our interest payment's two forty-three a year.
I think our forty grand a year.
I think so, I think that's what the number is.
Of the two point four.
True, on that generator deal though, would you know if, if people would have any grants available for us by then, probably not. You know there's grants, but I mean, you don't know if we can get any to upgrade it.
Um, we'll have our emergency management manager look into the P M grants, um, or that type of stuff, we get an answer before that meeting.
Yes, to see if we even have a shot, they might pay that upgrade, which is a big one, so that would be good. Is there a reason we gotta borrow two million a year? What's the reason to borrow two million a year?
No, it could.
So if we skip five years, we could pay a lot down, couldn't we?
We could, or you can not borrow, and then if a big project comes up, you can borrow seven million. The, the, but, I mean, the idea.
So we're doing today. We're gonna borrow eight two and still can borrow two million a year, why don't we not borrow for five years? There's ten million, we can pay it off.
Well, one, you know, one thing to keep in mind is when this system was put in place about eight years ago. This bonding and this, this perpetual keeping stuff up to date and carrying nominal debt, because we carry nominal debt. Is, you know, a big factor that's played into the financial stability of Polk County. Um, you know, us borrowing for capital, maintaining a healthy fund balance, which then increases our rating, which allows us to borrow cheaper. We keep the debt payment, we keep the debt levy stable for the citizens. I mean, it, it was a long-term plan and, you know, that's one thing I wanna, you know, I, I want to keep at the forefront. When this plan was developed by Administrator Frye, it was kind of a perpetual plan to keep stability in Polk County and keep our financial stability. It wasn't, we're borrowing for the highway and we're done. No, it was supposed to be, you know, the idea at the time was we keep this stable over.
Chad, are we on eleven or are we on ten?
I'm sorry.
Don't want you to get run, hey, settle down, Chad.
Still gonna argue.
I know. But I, I'm just saying, we're still on, um, L H B's presentation. So I just, I, I know we're gonna get to this stuff. What else, instruction questions do we have?
I have one.
Yes, Dean.
You say there's windows that have failed and there are gonna be ninety thousand to replace the failed windows currently?
Yes.
Way in our thought about.
Correct. Right.
Obviously, those windows fail, so the others will.
They're gonna fail.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna fail. Yep. So what are we missing in this budget? You, you've got everything in there, um, your perspective, and I, and you've built twenty percent and fifteen to twenty. Is, is this construction company that you consult with, do they look at your design and your scope of work? And do they come back, for example, I talked about the roof. You look at a roof assembly and you look at the scope of work, you're saying you have to raise all the curving up around the, that means new scoping, new metal, everything gets replaced. And I don't know what kind of details you guys have on your final plans for all that work. Does your consultant give you guys like truly honest feedback, like why did you guys design this like this, because there's a better way to do it? Or do they just validate your numbers on that scope of design work?
They were hired, if we would have had a construction manager as part of the project, that's where I see that constant feedback and, and giving, um, throughout the design process. The consultant we hired at, out of L H B's fees was just to validate our numbers. So they took our sixty percent drawings, reviewed it like they were putting a bid package together.
Sure.
Looked at it and then provided us confidence in where our numbers were lying.
So all the design work is your guys' design work, your, your details, you don't reach outside to get opinions on, hey, this is the only way we, or is this just the way you design a roof system?
We consulted internally with a variety of architects that are on our team to get the, the best opinion. Our preference is to do fully adhered E P D M, we think it's, you know, a longer lasting roof, uh, less chance for rips and tears. However, in discussion with the team, it is more, it is a more expensive off option. You know, the tar roof was another thing we discussed in the design meeting. So it wasn't that we just came in and said we're gonna replace it one for one, there was conversation, you know, as part of that decision process and, and it did come down to budget as well.
Is our staff, Mo and Rob, have you guys gone over every single detail of this project with this team, the engineering, the design people? Every spec to really understand what county's getting?
I've sat down with my staff, I know Mo has sat down as well.
Sure.
And we've gone over, you know, basically Ann's presentation, said, okay, this is what we're doing. And then I get feedback from Dean, who's been here the longest out of any of my maintenance staff.
Right.
Um, any other questions, concerns?
Sure.
Any other areas that we need to address? You know, so we encompass, you know, everything that, that our questions and concerns are in this.
And you know what they're specking out, you know the equipment they're specking, you know everything.
They expect anything, yeah, so.
We, we've been working on those in that December sixteenth deadline, is when, we've talked some general discussions with Alec and Nate involved manufacturers.
Again, it goes back to my question is that we're going with the general contractor bidding process. Um, and I know that's why you outsourced it, because you're not as comfortable with that. Then, then a project mar, project manager where they're working through all the low, you know, because they're gonna go out and get low bidders. You know, you're gonna take low bidder, so you gotta make sure everyone's, um, yeah. Uh, so I go back to that question is, is, uh, for the contractors that are gonna be bidding it, how much flexibility are you really putting into your bid documents? That allow them to give alternates on a lot of the project?
So our spec is written as a, a basis of, basis of design for the base value. We require them to submit a substitution request form, and that's built into our front end documents. They submit that to us during that four week bid period, we review it to make sure that it's an apples to apples. If there's something that might be slightly different than what our base spec calls out, we would reach out to Mo and Rod and say, is this something you're worth considering? Um, otherwise, it really aren't in favor of accepting alternates after the bidding period, because it's just not an honest way of doing business. However, if some, if a contractor wants to submit a voluntary deduct alternate, that is something that we will list on the bid form, that we will discuss after the bidding period. You know, when the bids are presented, often contractors will say, you know, I've got this idea that I can save you a hundred and fifty thousand just by doing this or, or changing the phasing of this. Or have you considered this type of roping system? Well, definitely, that's our opportunity for them to put their ideas on the bid form and send them to us.
But you're gonna be, you're gonna be taking base bid and you're gonna take low bid, is your, gonna be your recommendation as long as you qualify them? But is the board gonna have an opportunity to have that discussion with that contractor to say, do you see any other savings in the scope of work?
I would say if, if.
Is that an option?
I'd say if board members want to sit in a meeting with us where we're vetting those numbers, I don't think it's fair to them to have a bunch of different people calling them, I think we all.
Calling them, I'm saying, we've done this before when we hired project managers.
So yes, I would say that any board members are welcome to be part of that process, it's that vetting process that we go through to review the bids. And if two are close, you know, you look at some of those materials that they're providing. Choose which one you want to go with.
We have gone through with our scoping meetings, um, page turning, um, on all the pages of the drawings, looking at the details, trying to ask the questions on what are the transitions gonna look like as you try? We're not replacing the, the floors everywhere, you know, so as we have to open these doors up and the other doors. For us, the floor in there that has the molded coping up there, how do we make that look presentable and not like it's just chopped in there? Look at those details, uh, fix your details, do efficiencies for toilet hanging. We haven't got. But yeah, so. We have gone.
Yes, we're plugging along, so if there's something that you're feeling we're not moving in the right direction, if you want to share that with Mo, otherwise, um, drawings will be issued on December sixteenth. Everyone can take a look at, as well as specifications, if there's specific products you're interested. The other piece I would request from you is if there's local contractors that you want to make sure that they're given the bidding information. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we're getting the word out and as part of that, we're going out and, you know, informing local contractors that those bids are available. So, or those bid drawings are available. So any information you can share with Mo that we can get from you, um, great. But we will be posting it on, you know, the, the bidders exchange, we'll be posting it on the, um, paper and. Word of mouth is probably even better for qualified contractors that you want to. Also do a pre-bid walkthrough, um, you know, probably in this room to educate contractors that have questions. And then we go through an, um, addendum process that we get their feedback, and that's a great opportunity for them to ask questions. And we update the drawings through those along the way.
And so the one question in the beginning, we talked about the construction manager, general contractor issues. And at some point, we said right at the end, we were gonna just discuss that one more time, are we comfortable going into this project with the general contractor versus a construction manager?
Yeah, this point, I don't, I wouldn't see changing it. I think the benefit that the construction manager would have brought would have been the earlier in the bigger.
You passed that timeline, know that you're fine with where we're going.
Said those that way all the time.
And you think we're gonna get multiple bids with the, the?
I mean, there's several contractors that are quite busy, but they're, they're looking out, you know, six months to a year in advance, so they're looking for next. A good time for.
I bet we're gonna get the big one, the bigger company. Myron's, uh, Carl Sanders are gonna bid on.
Definitely, and we work with them all the time, so we'll be calling them and hoping they're here to make sure, we don't have.
Construction managers too, their, or their project managers, you know.
You're getting the, the.
You're getting the whole thing anyways.
Just a different contract.
Yep.
I appreciate, I know it was a long, long, uh, a lot of information to get through. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, you know, always feel free to reach out.
So, um, number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding government center remodel project. So who wants to ask us, what do you guys want us to do now?
Well, we can talk about, I mean, obviously, it's your discussion, but you can talk about what isn't, you want to pull out, what is put in. We can also talk about funding options, because one of the questions is how are we gonna pay for all this? And really, and to make it quick, you know, we've got four different types of, of funding. We got the, the bonding that Brian talked about, we've got Bremer Bank and the loan there, we've got general fund dollars. And we have ARPA funds, an option. I think what Brian was saying, and I think what staff has, has agreed upon is when we're at home, we like to pay off things. Uh, but right now, as Brian said, this is fantastic time to borrow money. So I, again, it's your decision, but you're not gonna get a lower interest rate, in my opinion, and we just heard interest rates are gonna start going back up. So by doing that, by, by borrowing that money for a good portion of it, or all of it, then you have that cash available for future expenses that might come up. And think about the things we've talked about the last few months, the roof at the, the government center. Um, what's gonna happen with COVID, what's gonna happen to the economy, our sales tax, our dollar? All I'm saying is, is if, if, you know, you want to pay it all off, cash right now, then you're doing it when the money's the least expensive that it has been in, in a long, long time. Can be a combination, finance a certain portion, little cash from the, the general fund or a little money from the ARP. If, uh, you recall, even in the second phase of the ARP funding, it can be applied toward water and plumbing, correct?
Yeah, water, certain water.
So, so there might be, what we, we just ballparked, we said there might be two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars there that could be used by the ARP. And on this first round, it could be, you know, used for anything.
What do you guys think? Do you think we want to first just get out of the way, um, the easy one? Maybe it's not, is to, uh, give direction to administration on whether we go with Bremer or go out? I mean, that seems like one to give some, right? You'd like to know how, and not necessarily we need to know the dollar amount tonight, but who do you want? What does the board want to do? Who do you want to go with financing?
Well, I, yeah, I think direction as far as what financing do you want us to start firming up and start working in? You know, do you want, and how much? How much of the project do you want to go out and finance it on?
Hey, Kim?
I'd like to go with the bank for the more options, if we don't go with the full amount of money.
Is there consensus with going with Bremer Bank?
Down to six or whatever, they at least give us that flexibility that we don't pay, right? Day we get it. The market, I just like that.
I was just gonna expound on what Kim was saying is that, um, if we did go with Bremer, if we did want to apply any fund balance or ARPA funds, we would still be able to do that. If we wanted to do that, we wouldn't have to decide that right now. But if we wanted to do that in the future, we would be able to, whereas if we do a bond issue, then that's gonna close that door.
I think what Brian's saying, in my opinion, is. Him is to follow that direction with the bank. And you have options down the road through our, you know, financing process, because they aren't gonna give us all the money at the end.
Sure.
And if we change, then we can change a little.
We also get to refinance, right?
Awesome, thank you.
We, at the end of our discussion, uh, I still was not satisfied with the. Brian's. Page seven, I don't think that. If, if I understood correctly, that if Bremer would be willing to refinance the seven point two million.
They're here, Bremer's still here.
I, I realize that.
Okay.
And, and, uh, if, if that's what I understood, Ed.
Yep.
Presumably at two point one percent.
Yep.
On the, uh, that's a, a difference of point four, five percent. Interest rate on seven million two, I calculated to be over thirty-two thousand dollars a year. I don't know, that was not in this table.
But it is, in a sense, so the table before you, what's represented is the interest cost in the tables, the interest cost of the eight point two mil. But it is, in a sense, so the table before you, what's represented is the interest cost in the tables, the interest cost of the eight point two million.
Yeah.
And the first table is the interest cost of the eight point two, oh, at the two point one Bremer rate, the interest cost of the eight point two at the one point five market rate. What's in red is the difference that you would save if you also wrapped the seven point two with Bremer and refinanced.
I don't believe so.
It is.
That is, that is, that was laid out, Mr. Brittany.
I did, I did the math and it didn't come out that way.
All right, but anyways, Mike, they say that it is, so we, we respect your opinion, Bremer's here, let's ask Bremer.
That detail, I would be glad that, to share that with him.
Sure, go ahead.
To see it.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's the three page that Brian alluded to.
Well, we don't, yeah, but you're just saying it's there, I don't know that we need to dive into three pages.
I was gonna say, I can share that with him specifically, if you'd like me to show you, but the hundred and fifteen is accurate. And I've, I've got it detailed out for the existing loan, what the interest was each year, and the proposed loan at two point one percent, what it is each year.
I appreciate that, we have a finance director that would be the right person to deal with you on that, not board supervisors. We're here, we're not here to, uh, be that guy, yeah.
And, and so I think that is the first.
That's what I've been trying to say.
Right.
You're trusting your finance.
I think we should, uh.
You wanna make a motion?
To vote on.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Go with the local bank.
Right.
And there's a second. Hey, is, is there any further discussion? We've been talking about it for a while, I don't see none, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right, can I ask a clarification here, or is it to go with one particular bank, or do you want term sheets put out?
It was to Bremer, that's the way the motion was.
Okay, all right.
All right, so at least now we know we're going with the bank, and you can work with Bremer. Now, the next question would be is, how, do we wanna use any other funds for this project? Or are we gonna just, uh, give Chad to go ahead to go with the proposed big budget? And borrow all?
Yeah, we should, I should, we should wait for the, uh, that sixty percent or a hundred percent next month to see how much we wanna really do, if there's any.
Just, let's just go, so right now, we're gonna lock in a rate for thirty days.
I think so.
And within the next thirty days, we're gonna, we're gonna decide regardless, the loan's gonna be for eight million, we may not borrow it all, you're saying.
I, I'm saying we better see them whole numbers and then see what we're at.
Is that what everyone's saying, they wanna go that direction? Okay.
And I, I need corporation counsel's input on this, so budgeted the seven point seven million, 'cause that was the number we had at budget time. This will require a budget amendment, so.
Is it all anticipated to be completed next year and all?
That, and what's the completion schedule again?
December, she said, the end of December.
Yeah, I just think it's December, the, you know, the roofing is the, the key question.
For budgeting, we would need to budget it all next year.
So that's a budget amendment?
Could be the safest.
Go, and that's a two-thirds.
Right.
We'll bring that forth.
And so you're gonna go to general.
We can leave it at that, we can leave it at the seven, seven to start with, or whatever, or, or cover that with different funds.
But even, even if you use different funds, the budget amount itself for the project is what is need, will need to be changed, not necessarily whether you use the Bremer funds or ARPA or fund balance.
And, and I don't, I, I think I would be more comfortable with a budget amendment, this is eight point two, before we sign a note for eight point two.
Yeah.
So you're saying this is gonna, you're gonna bring a resolution to general government?
Yeah.
And then it's gonna come back to the county board in December?
In December, for budget.
You guys okay with that process?
And you wonder if it ends up at eight point five, we gotta do it again?
Either have to, well, we'll have to adjust the budget, and then you'll have to determine how you want to pay for the overage. Whether you wanna open the loan up to a new spot quote or pay with fund balance.
Cause the eight point two covered just about everything, except, you know, your only cuts here, I mean, this project is, is almost, almost a hundred percent mechanicals, it's all mechanically driven. Um, your option of the hundred and seventy-five thousand for the updated generator, if you wanted to put the whole thing on here. Um, the office move renovations was only a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, to make, uh, customer-centric, uh, more availability. So if you went with the eight point five and the project came in at seven, nine, you don't have to take all the money either. So, it, the project really is driven by mechanicals, there's not a lot of, of, besides the twenty percent, um, fluff. In the current bids right now, there's not a lot of extras in there that, if you cut the automation to the health, human services side, at some point in the next several years, you'll be back here replacing that anyways, same thing with the windows, so we're just deferring maintenance at that point.
And county's been good at deferring maintenance for a long time, right?
Yes. Just been here, seventy-four, I guess, yeah, seventy-four, that's.
Oh, it's your fault, you've been on the board a long time.
Yeah. And try to put those in there all the time, too, that's our, our C I P just gets hooked up, where we gotta maybe be a little tougher on that.
Are there any other questions or discussions that administration you guys need from the board tonight? Like, are we missing anything?
I think I wanted you to see all the diagrams, get a gist of what the whole project looks like. Take your presentations home and study them.
And if Mike wants that more detailed information, contact Chad, and let's do it that way.
Yeah, I, I think I see it now.
Okay. All right. All right, so there'd be a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Make motion back to adjourn.
Are we all in favor?
Very popular motion.